All right, great. Well, welcome to the February 25th Hadley School Committee meeting. Can I get a motion to call the meeting to order?
Soon.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Here we go. I know of one adjustment to the agenda that is item 3K, which is the EEC request for census information. We will not be covering that at this meeting. So that is tabled for potentially a future meeting. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda?
No.
Okay. And we will be going into executive session and tonight's meeting. All right. Hello. All right, we'll move on to number three, Presentations and Discussion Items. The Service Field Trip. Senora, update.
Thank you. I am like a bad penny. I keep showing up for the same story repeatedly and I don't go anywhere. So our plan was to go to Guatemala and unfortunately we switched all over the different country from one country to the other because of safety reasons. And so this has been a long process, but I finally have found a company. But that's going to actually force me into next year. I had a deposit. I took for that last trip and they're sticking with me. And I know that, you know, a few other people would still be sticking with me too. So I don't think it'll be a huge trip, but I'd still like to go to Costa Rica with a company called Explorica. Next February, February of 2020.
Okay. And this week, Costa Rica is the new destination.
It is, yes.
And the new dates are?
It'll be the February vacation of 2020.
Okay.
And the difficulty was finding the service component. That is what means most to me. And so I did a lot of searching and then I finally found a company that does kind of offer that service component.
Great. Yeah, I appreciated all the information too that was in the packet.
Oh, good.
Any questions from folks? Paul, could you hear that?
Yeah, I did. It's us in the beginning.
Costa Rica, there's a nice picture of you. You mentioned?
I'll let it go.
Okay, come on. When you come back, you come.
Yes, you mentioned the concern about the deposit. Is it a transferable deposit?
Yes, I had done when we had done our trip to Nicaragua, we kind of ran the whole thing ourselves. So we had some difficulty finding a service trip. So I had already started collecting the money with the hopes of it. And I gave that already back to them and they have redeposited with Explorica. So as of now, any money that I had collected for Nicaragua and/or Guatemala is now back to the right owners.
So we do have this as an action item just because now it is a new destination and new dates, just to get that permission on the blocks. Are there any questions before we? A motion? Okay.
Motion to approve the Costa Rica trip.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Trip approved.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All right. Second item, the Music Field Trip. This is really an informational item on the difference in the dates. So you originally voted and approved as presented for dates 27 and 28. It's actually April 26 and 27. Based on the language of the vote, I don't think you need to re-vote it. I just wanted you to know about the change in dates.
Great, thank you.
All right. Item C, Hopkins Program of Studies, 1920. Right?
Sure. There's a summary document that you have, which should correspond to page numbers of each of the sections and the track changes. I highlighted any new course descriptions that have been proposed by departments, including the addition of a war literature course, which would be co-taught potentially by the English and Social Studies Department, as well as the addition of advanced placement macroeconomics to be added in to the program of studies next year. And those are outlined by department in terms of those courses as you go through. There are items such as the add-drop deadline at the beginning, which has just changed to the first Friday of September.
Brian, can I see a big favor? Do you mind presenting?
No.
So it might be easier for Paul to hear.
Sure.
Leaving it from Paul.
Hello? So that the add-drop deadline is always the first Friday before October 1st. So the last day that we can get to in September prior to October 1st, we always make it a Friday. So the students have an opportunity to go through a couple of cycles with our waterfall schedule to be able to make decisions as to whether or not they're going to need to make a change in a particular course or section. And then the table of contents that you see is not accurate to the track changes version. I changed that to reflect the actual final version that it will be. So if you don't pay attention to those numbers, it'll be fine. There is, there are two items also of substance in here. One coming at the end, which you don't find on your summary of changes, which is the addition of a course called Global Studies. And this is a course that's a one-credit option. It's very similar to a course that had been proposed when I was the principal at Mohawk by the social study, I'm sorry, the Science Department Chair Kathy Steer ran a course called Tropical Ecology of Belize. This is a course called Global Studies, which will, you can see in the course description, that students would need to opt-in who would be traveling on the Europe trip next year. And if they complete the proposed and assigned work to the satisfaction of the sponsors of the trip, then they would receive a one-credit travel option, a one-credit for international travel, complete with a grade that wouldn't go into their GPA, but would appear in their transcript. And then the other item of substance is very early on and something that the committee will need to take into consideration. I think Dr. McKenzie has given you guys some information to consider as well. The Social Studies Department has been working very hard vertically. I know also down at the elementary school to change the scope and sequence of the history and social studies curriculum to align with the new frameworks. And within that, that there are major course changes in terms of curriculum that needs to be written and is currently being written by the Social Studies Department as part of, hello?
Hello.
Hey.
As part of their professional learning community. For example, 7th grade world history is, 7th grade geography is going to become world civilization and geography. And 8th grade world history is going to be changed to United States and Massachusetts government and civics course, which is actually many years ago, something similar to what the course initially was under the Massachusetts frameworks they had taught. It was actually US History 1. But there's much more of an emphasis on civics throughout, in particular, the high school curriculum, but really beginning in the 8th grade. As a result of that, Mr. Burns has made a proposal that is highlighted in here with an asterisk on page four. Look at the note in the track changes version. It says that beginning with the class of 2024, which is the current 7th grade, his recommendation is that the committee consider changing the graduation requirement for history to a four-year graduation requirement or four-course graduation requirement. And that proposal specifically, what courses that would entail to US History and to world history courses are, can be done in some conjunction with advanced placement courses and honors level courses and so forth to meet that requirement. But that's something that we would have time to consider. And so there are a couple of different options that perhaps the committee may have. Dr. McKenzie, if this is a point where you might chime in about, did you share with them?
I did. And so on this vote, as you're looking through the program of studies, I think I did a memo to you today on Google Drive. The school committee can always vote and discuss things however you would like. But the way that I see it is you can certainly approve the entire program of studies with the recommendation for the change in graduation requirement tonight. You can approve the program of studies and request any further information from me regarding changing the graduation requirement, or you can do whatever you want. So I can wait until we're done with the program of studies, walk you through it, and then we can go through the change in graduation requirement if that works for folks. You can finish with that.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing else that's not here in specifically in the descriptions other than to add in each of the departments was sensitive also to some research that is on here that was done, if I'm not mistaken, by some students through Mr. Burns in looking at a couple of schools in our area which are larger. And of course, we had changed our schedule away from students carrying eight courses to carry seven courses. And we added more time on learning to each of the individual courses. And while that has had a positive impact on high school courses, it's had a negative impact on the options for electives because students are carrying one less course. In addition to that, it's a very small school in competing with schools like Amherst and Northampton. The elective options that we have, you'll see, are very small if we don't include virtual high school and some of the independent study options that kids have. But in terms of looking at our program of studies versus those schools, some of these departments, some of the departments have proposed some really interesting electives, including the addition of a middle school creative writing and drama option, which would fall into that alternating day course. The addition in science of a forensic science course and anticipating that we will be looking potentially at a new science department member or two for next year. They wanted to hold off to see what kind of expertise we might get to propose another semester-long option for a science elective so that we could expand along the lines of what Mr. Soluzio has done with honors biomedical sciences. And mathematics has also added in an additional fundamentals of logical reasoning course, which would be available to any student who has completed algebra. And it is a course that she has run in the past, although before the age of technology, she's found a pretty substantial number of resources which make it much more hands-on and accessible for students of all different types of backgrounds.
I have one question for you about the asterisk statement on the social studies where you've got the current data about 10 credits in US History and 10 credits in World History. Does it need to be so specific as we're going from it was 10 and five, is that right? And then so we're adding this other course requiring that as part of the graduation? Or is there any flexibility in that other five?
That's, that's the recommendation within the department. If, if for some reason the school committee wishes to place something in the program of studies, which gave sign-off rights, for example, to give an example. I have the authority as the principal if a student is going to be taking, wants to take AP Biology, but that's where their physical education course fails. Obviously, it would be illogical to force a student to take physical education and, you know, potentially do damage to their transcript by not allowing them to take a more competitive course. And so if there were other options, you know, I would think that would be up to the school committee to put that into the hands of the principal and department chair.
I will say that I believe one of the reasons that Mr. Burns suggested this is when you look at what area schools offer. So Mass Core, the Mass Common Core for graduation requirements recommend a minimum of three years of history. And they recommend that high school students have US History and World History. That aligns with the frameworks. What Mr. Burns is proposing is in 9th grade, that US 1 course or honors or any AP alternative, that that time period covers a revolution through World War I. World History covers civilizations from 500 to 1800, including spread of major religions and philosophies. US 2 then picks up the 1920s to the present. World History 2 covers the interaction of world civilizations between 1800 and the present. So the topics, the subject, world and US is required in the framework. I think that something history teachers often feel is there's so much that to cover in any meaningful way requires more time. I will say, so I did share with you and gave you a hard copy in a Google document. I assumed these would be questions you'd be interested in when considering changing the graduation requirement. What is the Mass Core, which is three years of history minimum? What are area schools doing? You'll see that all area schools currently have a three-year graduation requirement for history, except for where, where public schools currently has a two-year graduation requirement for history. We're proposing a four-year. Right. What are the financial implications? Later, Jason, I invited him to edit this document, so I will read what his thoughts are on that. And then what Mr. Beckett just referred to, this course offerings table was the research that a student did with Mr. Burns as assistants. And the student, really the question they were answering was, for a small school district, when we look at places where students sometimes consider choosing to, what is it about that? How do their, how do our offerings compare? And certainly you can see in art and music, we don't have as many offerings there, although we proposed to a theater arts elective, a drama and creative writing elective, and a fine arts elective is proposed in the new program of studies. So that speaks directly to that. In social studies currently, we actually do offer, although we don't require four years, more social studies courses than both of our neighbors to the east and west. So how would it work? We're just looking at the grid that shows Hadley 9th through 12th with that addition in 12th grade of the World History 2, I think it does in the piece. So 10th grade, folks that are in AP US History. So is that kind of seen as a continuative? Is that history 2, US History 2?
Well, the interesting part thing is for students who would complete AP either, if they completed AP US, they actually cover both timeframes. And so they effectively meet the graduation requirement, although not for the, for the courses. They meet the graduation requirement for the time period, which would mean they would need to take an elective. So for those students, they would actually need the option of taking the elective, which is fine, but they meet the time period requirement. And I think that's in parentheses next to the asterisks down below on the track changes version. It should say, you know, two, two courses worth of US History, two courses worth of World History. And part of their argument was basically?
Two, 10, 10 and US History and 10 and World History. So it's two courses or five courses. Okay. So I guess in that kind of situation, are you saying that the elective then would come towards the US History crap?
Yes.
Because they took the AP, they're done with US History.
Exactly. And then AP World History is the same thing. It's basically the history of the world from the beginning of time.
Yeah.
Sort of like the Mel Brooks movie, although that was only part one.
Right. And I will, if it's all right, I will read some of Jason's comments. I did invite him to comment as to why the teachers feel so strongly about this. By adopting, and you noticed that I had written that we haven't done a thorough financial analysis, but Jason did weigh in and he was thoughtful about it. He writes, "By adopting a four-year program, we believe that we will be best equipped to serve our students' needs. We believe that having a solid social studies foundation prepares students to be better citizens, which is the focus of the new social studies frameworks. We reviewed the possibility of maintaining a three-year program, but this would require combining either all of US History or all of World History into one course, which we believe would not only lead to a lack of depth in understanding of history, but also continue to send the message that social studies is a second-class area of study, as the emphasis has been on standard for so long. In addition, the social studies frameworks are designed to both supplement and support the ELA standards. So by requiring four years of social studies, we will be able to consistently support ELA learning. The new frameworks stress the importance of civics in all social studies courses, and we are now required to do civic-based service learning projects in both middle school and high school. As preparing students to be active citizens is a primary function of social studies education." Great. Your computer froze. Hold that thought. You're under your seat. "We believe that it is important for students to be consistently engaged with it throughout their entire six years at Hopkins Academy. Financially, we do not believe this will present any financial cost. As a department, we are moving away from costly textbooks as the cost for a classroom set of textbooks ranges around $6,000. In addition, there are plenty of free resources available to us. In terms of staffing, we have enough staffing currently to implement this change and actually expand our offerings. With this plan, we will be able to offer an AP History course to the 10th, 11th, and 12th grades on an annual basis where, as we currently only offer two." Those were Jason's comments. So I guess my only comment again is on this parent medical statement is that it could be misinterpreted to only be, I mean, you described the situation of you satisfied your 10 credits already through, or you satisfied your five credits in all of US History. Your other five could be an elective. So you just may want to make reference to?
Yeah, and I think there's not a single student who will be taking the course next year that will have, who will register for a course from this particular program of studies who will have any courses that will have an implication on that change in graduation requirements because it's this year, 7th grade will be in the 8th grade next year, not taking high school courses yet.
Right.
So that provides us the opportunity for the social studies department to come back with a recommendation that clarifies. And the, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the original draft language that he had given me was AP US or US 1 and 2. AP World or World History 1 and 2. And if, so there'll be a set of, there would be a set of options that would go with that.
Okay.
I have a question based on the other districts in the areas, graduation requirements. Knowing that we're actively trying to bring in school choice students and recruitment of recruited students, I'm wondering if that would be, if that would kind of impact that recruitment in any way, saying that we require three years or four years of social studies, whereas other schools in the area require three. Don't, I mean, I'm all, I'm all for it, but I'm just curious remembering how I was in high school.
And I will, I will add, you know, we have managed to get in now, I think, our second school choice student by opening up really accelerated graduation options in conjunction with families that may be interested in going through the community college pathway and taking a great deal of responsibility and working with our guidance department. Angie Helen, as our director of guidance, has done a phenomenal job of helping a couple of students where other schools have denied students access. That we, we've opened up those opportunities to students and had some students come in from other school districts. And so I think that's an important consideration.
I, I mean, I hadn't thought about that point until you raised it. I'd say I'm curious what other committee members think about. I hadn't, I hadn't even thought about that, that it would have the unintended consequence of discouraging that headwind. I'd probably spin it. You know, I'd probably try to spin it as to how, you know, either more AP offerings are available because of this or, you know, somehow showing that it's how it's going to benefit the student. Well, the study of history is big in the news.
It's little benefit to the students that can take the AP courses. It won't benefit the students that it can't take the AP courses. It's going to be a detriment to those students. Or it could serve as a detriment to students.
Yeah, well, the idea behind the curriculum that they're developing and basically the focus of the curriculum they're developing is to have four years of sound citizenship preparation through high school with hands-on opportunities. So while that's salable in and of itself, I understand what you're saying that, you know, somebody might look to go to Ware where they only have to meet two years of a history requirement and then they can take other, other options. And so it is something that we didn't really take into consideration. It's a good question.
I'm reading the news lately, the emphasis on history and just having a historical context today's day. Americans are known for having amnesia and not really understanding, understanding US History, let alone World History, where, you know, of today's actions based on past, past actions. I think it's so important. I think it's really, really important and I would rather the students who come in valuing that.
And I fully, I agree with you and I fully understand that, but it's just, I don't see how these conversations can be held independently of each other. It's like trying to do all these things to recruit students, but meanwhile we're doing something that might deter some students. There, those questions, I don't, I think that's just, that requires some additional thought and maybe some investigation into if things, if other districts in the area changed any of the requirements, if that had any impact, anything like that. It could just be me worrying for no good reason, but I'm just, it's, it's just one of those.
And I think that one of the things to add into that thinking too is keeping the positive side, regardless of what the committee decides at this point, we still have time. That, you know, it's not going to be integrated for a single student until the following school year anyways, and that would just be at the point of the registration process. But the intent of the social studies department is worthwhile and something, regardless of how it's woven into the particular graduation requirements that are selected, very similar to the idea of running or adopting personal finance as a graduation requirement. They're trying to put our school at the forefront of an entire program of studies that literally takes a student through a level of preparation. That's a holistic preparation for being able to go out in the world and not just be accomplished, but make contributions. And I love the idea of that, how that manifests itself into coursework. They have an idea that right now they're proposing as being a four-year idea. That doesn't necessarily mean that it's not something that can't be revisited with, you know, part of that criteria being, how does this fit into our process of recruiting people out there as we're an excellent school?
So I'd rather, I'd rather be selected for our excellence in that, right? I mean, you're, you're going to have a spectrum of people who are looking for different things in, in their education and making school choice just about anywhere. But I'd rather get the students that really value that four-year history experience. And I think it's, I think it sells today to colleges looking at students who can think critically and understand history and can articulate why a certain course of action is important and can demonstrate the service learning components. So I would be a big pro. And can I clarify one thing that might be helpful? Some folks may not realize this. I know you're not speaking to a single population, but if people were wondering, well, what if a student really has challenges accessing the general curriculum and that a four-year graduation requirement would make it near impossible to graduate? If a student has an individualized education program, there may be exceptions made to graduation requirements at any time. So that certainly doesn't speak to every child in the school, but it's important to point that out for everyone.
How does, just, how does this impact some of the other electives? If we make this a four-year requirement, how would it impact some of the other electives that we're proposing here for like the Science Department and the Math Department? Would they still have equal availability to be able to take these elective courses with the additional?
By the time students, a typical student gets to their senior year, there is a portion of our students that I can't, I can't say with any degree of certainty, but certainly could estimate that approximately 50% of seniors are taking an additional challenging course of some sort, although it may not be in history. Some, for example, some students who are going, as Jason had articulated, into the STEM field might in that particular year take honors Biomed. They had taken AP Biology the previous year. And now with that open social studies option, they're now taking AP Chemistry. And so in one way or another, it will have an impact on what students must do and could have an impact on what students are looking at doing, either in terms of their core options and extending their core, their core choices or their elective choices. So it's one more spot in their schedule. Students have in four years, there's 28 spots in their schedule roughly, if you take away the alternating or semester-long courses that they have to fit, but 28 full spots that they need to fit in their schedule. So if we're going to mandate one more and provide a variety of options within that, certainly a student who's taking the advanced placement options could conceivably have the same ability to do what it is that they're doing. But about half the students, and again, that's an estimate, but about half the students at least seek to fill their schedule with another challenging academic option that's going to have them prepared often programmatically for what they're looking to do at the post-secondary level.
Right.
And then there are other students who are saying, I would really like to take two physical education courses or I would, I want to take PE and art and a computer science class. So it varies.
So there's that availability though. I wouldn't want to limit a student who's advancing themselves through high school if they've decided that no matter how important World History or US History is, has that availability to kind of further themselves and advance for science.
So, good.
Well, that's, mine might have just misunderstood or something, but that's like, that's not what I heard in that. So I might, just for my own clarification. So like if a student already has their three, already has their three years of, three years of history that would have been required beforehand, there would be room in their schedule that senior year to take that fourth now required class and still take something that they want to take because it's going to further them in what they want to do after.
Depending on whether, but what it is, is it does put, she'd asked the question, does that limit? It limits one option potentially in that, and the way that students are using that now varies widely. So does that make a little bit more sense in terms of clarifying? So I don't want to say, yes, it limits them and everything that they can do. It doesn't. It provides them with another educational opportunity. It provides them with another educational opportunity that has intent behind the, the programming, that has the civic responsibility at its core and, you know, I think that's worth considering.
Are any other districts looking into extending their requirements to four years? I know that this is what they're currently doing.
That's what they're currently doing. And in some, in a couple of the districts, they indicated that they recommend four years. They don't require it, but they recommend it. But at this point in time, no, when I sent this email out asking this information from superintendents, nobody indicated that it was under examination currently. I'd love to lead the way.
So can you clarify, Annie, I know we, we need to take action on the program of studies for this coming year, but this can be something that, do we need to decide this way or no?
No. So that would just mean somebody can put a motion that says, you can, you can make a motion, whatever you would like. You can move to approve the program of studies with, with the change of maintaining a three-year requirement. So that would imply adjustments. You can, the program of studies and a four-year social studies requirement, which is essentially as it's presented, or you can, anyone can move anything they would like to see.
Andy, can I ask you a question?
Yes, of course.
Sorry, just to point with this, to what class would this apply?
The current seventh graders, the current seventh graders when they graduate. So no current high school classes now, class of 24.
But those classes, if they were to be offered, they could obviously take them if they want.
When they get into high school, absolutely. Yeah, this is, so we're talking, these are high school level courses. The seventh, the seventh grade takes ancient civilizations and geography two. The eighth grade takes Massachusetts and US government and civics is what.
Maybe I should escalate this, when would the classes that are to be offered if we were to approve it next year or two years from now?
Two, I don't see it in next year's current schedule, so.
Yeah, Paul, the middle, the middle school curriculum will change next year. So my understanding is that next year, the current eighth grade, rather than taking world history one, is going to take
Massachusetts.
Massachusetts and US government and civics.
And so the courses, next year's course offerings, there would still be a US, no, actually all four it looks like would have to be next year. There's US one, US two, world two. I'm looking at the draft schedule that's also in the packet.
Yeah, I think they made some assumptions in terms of potential teacher assignment in there.
And world one isn't in there now because the current eighth grade is taking the world one. So next year's schedule, next year's schedule has US one, US two and world two. Because the current eighth grade took world one.
Right.
So it doesn't impact next year's schedule.
Okay, thanks.
So this trajectory would roll out in the 2021 economic year?
Yeah, you'd start seeing it in the schedule, right?
Got it.
And is any of this staffing dependent or is this something that if we decide to do, we're committed to and then we have to figure that part out afterwards?
Uh, no, not in terms of expertise. We, we would need to do it in the context of our existing staffing. It's not like we could put a graduation requirement in place and then take on more staffing on top of that.
And so Jason's, Mr. Burns' thinking is that there are, there is sufficient human resources to do this. I wrote in my notes to you that I, when I say the district, that's a fancy way of saying me. I have not done that analysis and I just didn't have time to do that analysis prior to this meeting. And as I said, I, I just didn't catch it when I was in the program of studies. If that's an analysis you'd like me to do prior to finalizing that decision, I can add to what Mr. Burns has. He does not believe that there will be an impact, but I would sit with him and say, okay, let's schedule this out then to, to see. So I can't definitively. I trust his assessment, I do, but my next, let's, let's work it out.
Well, it's, in fact, my opinion, I think, on this is that I like the direction it's going, but I think having a little bit more information about the financial impact would help us just make a fully informed decision. And if there is any potential negative impact on these other electives being able to be selected, that, you know, that's, I think would be just good to hear the perspective on whether or not there's, I get it, it's one slot that we're saying, okay, now this slot that is taken up by world history two is no longer available for something else. I don't know how that's typically being used by seniors right now.
We could maybe put something, yeah.
We can, I'd agree.
It might be good to know.
What would you like to move to do this evening?
Well, I guess the question is, are there any other questions or concerns on the program of studies absent this graduation requirement change?
This is Paul, I like the, I like the increased emphasis on civics. I think it's great because, as Mary said, they're really supportive.
I don't have any other comments. I love the literature and drama classes. Some of the classes that you've mentioned sound really neat, the, the war literature one, two. I love the fact that they're co-teaching. That's a really great use of talent to find the innovative middle ground between two disciplines. So I really like that we're doing that. So all in all, I think the program of studies looks great.
Yeah, I like seeing the theater arts in there too. I think we've talked previously about some of the theater curriculum getting back in here, so.
I like some of the, just the diversity of the options for students to have as these electives too. I like to see that as they start to progress, just having that array of options. Because that's kind of what we've been talking about too, making ourselves more unique. Some of these are pretty unique courses, so I think that's exciting to talk about.
Yeah, definitely.
I agree with, with the idea of advancing ourselves and paving the way with the curriculum in regards to the social studies. But I would, I would echo if we could get a little bit more information and maybe that would give us a little bit more time to kind of wrap our heads around after this discussion and come back to it, if that's possible for next meeting.
So I've written down that I am going to follow up with information on financial impact and potential financial impact and the potential impact on elective choices for, really for the most part, we're talking seniors, three versus four years.
So we can vote to approve everything minus?
Minus that change.
Yeah, and I guess one other question I would have is, you know, looking at this, you know, English, math, social studies and science, your four core areas, we're, we're kind of through this privileging social studies above the science, which, you know.
Right, so, right, you have three years still in science.
Right, yeah. And I guess it would be good just to get a take from the faculty, from the science perspective as to, you know, does that seem, I, I know we can't privilege everything, but.
Yeah, you know, I think where the science department may, may be at a disadvantage is through the course of retirement next year that they're not going to give any, you know, there's going to be a different set of folks representing that department potentially. And so it would be important to really use past and upcoming registration numbers, given the fact that we'd be staying the same anyways, to see what options over the last couple of years, once students have completed that requirement, what have they chosen to do? You know, I know in at least one year, we, we had difficulty filling student schedules. And we had a number of students who had fallen out of the schedule. And although it wasn't a huge number, it was more significant really than our faculty wanted to take on in terms of empty independent studies and teaching assistedships, which is why we changed the format for taking on teaching assistants and independent studies and made those more rigorous. I'd really like to take the opportunity to thank each of the department chairs and each of the members of the faculty who did a phenomenal job, I think, of, of being really creative and innovative and putting together new coursework that was really, that's really consistent with our expertise and also some, some research that they've done on the outside and things that would be attractive to our students.
I'd like to echo that. It's great to see some of these electives and core courses. All right, is there a motion then to approve the program of studies without the asterisk, no changes to social studies?
Without graduation requirement, without changes to that, because I think there are course changes. So without changes to the history, social studies, graduation requirement at this time.
Second?
Great.
Yes, thank you.
Before we move on from that, I'm just curious, not that I'm proposing any more work, but I'm just curious if we've done any polling or gathered any information from seniors? How they feel leaving the school, if they feel like they've had viable options and felt like they got as much as they wanted out of their variety of courses? And then, I don't know if there's a way to, like an exit interview almost. I'm not suggesting, I'm just curious if we've done.
That's, that's the easiest thing on this list, actually.
I'm just curious.
That's the easiest thing on this list.
And I would say that the true benefit of unders, of knowing, of knowing the impact and whether one is ready to handle civic life and have a historical context comes later, years later.
I agree.
Right, like if, if we look at our own training history, I wish that I had placed greater emphasis on it. And looking at what is happening in our society right now, I wish more of our schools had more years of emphasis. And it was forward with the Model T. If I had asked people what they wanted, they would have told me a faster course. Right, so I think we should caution ourselves when asking students because they're ready to get out of here. And I'm sure they're not, you know, they wouldn't be excited necessarily to take a fourth year. But if we know, if we know what's right for them. And if, and I would be more in favor of asking Angie Cullen what colleges and employers are interested in. Well-rounded students with civic experience, service, you know. Yeah.
But I think you, I've also seen, maybe it's on the choice exit survey that you've asked about this in terms of kind of category of reason why leaving, like is it, does it have to do with athletics? Does it have to do with course offerings? Does it have to do with something completely different? You know, all of those other things. I, I just, if there's any information that might strike towards helping to shape that.
Sure. I don't think I would ask, would you like another graduation requirement? I want to ask our seniors, how about we extend the school year for you all and you take some more courses? But maybe just more generally, what kinds of courses would you like to see the school offer? What do you wish we did more of? What courses do you currently, you know, do you really enjoy? So, and I think we will have a fair number of students who really, do have students who've gone to major in history. They really enjoy it here, so.
Well, and it might give us some more feedback too, if maybe we should be offering more science or maybe we should be offering.
Right.
And, and having science students with, you know, really strong historical fundamentals is so important in all, all the majors, so. I'd much rather my son take four years of history than a baking class, which, you know, is an elective option that he chose. But, yeah, so anyways.
All right, so we'll continue this conversation.
Sure, sure. There's a lot of science there. It's going to come in handy one day, but you know what I'm saying.
Okay, so Mr. Beck again is up with the proposed schedule. This doesn't require action and the new special progress report, neither of which require action, just updates on the schedule.
Sure.
Get to talk to you. Again, we can't. He's alone in New Zealand.
More than anything else, this is.
Actually, Andy, can you move the camera a bit?
Yeah, so you're stuck, I'm looking at our lenses.
Sorry.
I'm not getting all of Brian. There we go.
So you want to, you want the bald spot?
That's it.
So this is a grid that several years ago was actually created by Jason Burns and Angie Cullen, who basically was doing an administrative internship and trying to put together something that instead of us buying one of those boards to go on the wall, how can we look at physically creating the schedule from year to year, like many schools do? And then he just created an electronic version and worked that with Ms. Cullen. This year I wanted to say thank you to April Camuso, who's the head teacher this year, and Angie Cullen, who worked very hard to look at our current enrollment and project the courses that students would register for. So this is not a schedule. So I don't want you to think that this is anything more than a projection of what we believe we will need next year to be able to do what it is that we want to be able to do. And one of the things that you'll notice, there are a couple of things on here that this, this draft was put together. Ms. Camuso and Ms. Cullen have worked very hard on this and they put some things in place that, where there are names on here of courses that you didn't approve in the program of studies. So for example, art history, Ms. Sausi is not prepared to run advanced placement art history. And although there are a few students who are interested, those students are also interested in other courses. She's not prepared to run the advanced placement art history because she really needs to do coursework through the college board to be able to get the syllabus run. But that doesn't necessarily mean that she can't put other art options in place. And so she scheduled a couple of other art options. So if you're not looking at this as being something that's really hard and fast, but you're looking at sort of estimated numbers, you know, you can look at our, some of our larger sections. For example, in, in mathematics, may require that we make changes to split sections up. You know, while 21 is not a huge number, it's certainly not a large number for students in an advanced or an honor section. We want to make sure that college prep students who are being tested are going to get the lowest possible ratio. For example, in this year in algebra, we have a class of 13 and a class of seven in algebra one in the ninth grade, which is, that's a great ratio to be able to work with a teacher.
And I would just add, one of the things, one of the reasons that, that Brian and I wanted to do this, as Brian had said, students haven't seen anything, they haven't registered, this is a complete projection. We, we want, if you recall, last year we brought to you, it was, it was closer to me to say, it appears that we have a problem, right? There's, we have these larger enrollment in math courses than we want and under enrollment here. And we decided this year, we wanted to begin looking at this as early as possible. So if we need to make changes like that, we can inform parents well in advance, not over the summer. We can inform students before they pick those courses. We can try. We're probably, the plan is to run two tests of this schedule with students. Run one test and then make adjustments as needed. And most importantly, if we had to make changes, we could tell faculty. So this is us letting you know that we're trying to get ahead of the game this year and pay close attention to this, to give people more notice.
So does this kind of roll up to show, all right, for each teacher, there's how many, you know, individual classes and numbers?
Yes and no. I mean, they've had, the chairs have provided the opportunity for, like, the chairs have, so Ms. Camuso and, and Ms. Cullen have provided this, provided this to the chairs. And so, you know, teachers always have the opportunity to talk about preferences. They've consulted. And, you know, there hasn't been any complaining in that regard. It's a good, it's been a good overall collaborative process. I wouldn't even go so far as to say democratic, like people are throwing out things and matching themselves up with things that they're passionate about and also have a high level of expertise in. And we've not really been in a situation, or at least we're looking at next year not really being in a situation where, you know, somebody is in a difficult set of circumstances. And in those places where we have been, for example, we've had the great fortune of having expertise in somebody who's just an unbelievable team player in Karen Sausi, who happens to be an EMT also, taking on teaching the health courses and ninth grade health courses. And so that's worked out very well and she's become really skilled with it and made some recommendations as, as to changes that would really update the curriculum. And, you know, so we've been really fortunate that we have a really strong collaborative faculty that works well.
We do get a general sense of the number of preps that a teacher might have, different classes of preparation. To get a general sense, again, this is so preliminary, after we've tested it once, we'll include updates for you so you can see where, that, where the enrollments are falling out. The town course also, that's something that I'm really grateful that the chief spankable in public safety are working to create a course that they actually would use their staff to teach. So it would have very little impact on us at all and hopefully would prepare students who are interested in perhaps working as a dispatcher upon graduation or working in the public safety department, that, that's what they're designing the course for.
And then chemistry, physics and history, are those yet to be assigned?
Because that has to do with retirements or changes in staff. So there, we don't know who that replacements will be.
But those, we assume those would be new names on the list as opposed to shifting one of the.
Correct, exactly.
All right.
It's top. It's all I have, it's two, you can't miss it. We left someone off the schedule.
That was just me.
No, it's very helpful to see.
Yeah, April, April Camuso and Angie Cullen did a phenomenal job of making this work and in really short time. work, and, and in really short time, I'm very impressed with their work.
We asked.
Yep.
And so, this Friday, we have due and have prepared, at this particular point, I simply need to meet with our follow-up committee, um, to run all of the entire packet by them. I've just given you basically the summaries that will lead, the, there were three items that we needed to respond to in our special progress report. One of them, you guys got a summary on last year, summary responses to items one and two, I had done a PowerPoint presentation on our progress to date, and then on January 7th, we completed our, um, statement of core values, our statement was adopted in November. Um, our civic and social expectations, school-wide civic and social expectations have been adopted before the visit even occurred, because we made a decision really to focus on behavioral concerns, as we had some, some challenges in our climate and our culture. And on January 7th, we completed the process of approving language for a set of academic, school-wide academic learning expectations that need to be measurable, and so those are included also in your packet for your information. The faculty is actually voting on those now on Google Apps and so far, because we had consensus, it's a unanimous vote to approve. So, we'll be submitting that, along with the documentation of the process and so forth, to the Commission on Public Secondary Schools on Friday. It's a, it's an upload of, of a document that's roughly the size of the school committee packet itself, so I didn't include that whole packet in here, um, just because that would've been painful for your people.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, and I also couldn't get it to actually work on our scanner at school, which made me crazy. And Dee had left and locked me out of the central office, I couldn't go over and use the fancy one over there. The other item, summary response and support documents for item three, ensure that all aspects of the school culture are safe, positive, respectful, and supportive, including enforcement of the school code of conduct, which is fair and equitable. So, I broke this down into several components that are sort of along the lines of, um, a combination of what they asked for in the special progress report item, uh, that's aligned with work that we were either doing or had, are preparing to do. So, for example, physical safety, we had an enormous amount of interaction, not only with public safety personnel and had a great deal of training and so forth, not just with our teachers, but also with our kids. Um, and, you know, there are three separate enhanced lockdown procedures that they did with our students, uh, here at Hopkins Academy, which was great, um, and they kept it lighthearted but serious, all at the same time, without it being something that was fearful. And so, the only thing that is not included in your summary that I actually need to add in, is we had just done the reunification training on our faculty meeting on, on February 4th. So, there'll be one or two more just items that are added in, uh, in terms of physical safety. Second category, screening, risk identification, and conduct data trends. I shared an email earlier in the year, April Camuso, as the head teacher, had done an analysis, and yeah, it's wonderful to be in a school district where our biggest problem at, at our high school is tardiness. But 24% of our kids exceeding five tardies in a semester is, is a problem, especially when we're, we're a small town, we're close together, and we provide transportation for kids, so we really need parents to help kids to be able to understand that, um, being on time is important. When you see that a quarter of our students come to school late in the course of the semester, a significant number of times, um, it requires that we do something different as a school community, and if that means that we, Ms. Camuso and I need to come back and, and take a look at some of those issues with you, and, and change our levels of accountability with regard to that, then maybe that's something that we'll do. But in the meantime, we've, we've chosen to work with our most egregious offenders as partners with their family, um, doing things like removing privileges and so forth, until they get themselves together.
I would, um, ask you also to consider what are positive rewards that one could have for those who do arrive on time.
It's an interesting point. One of the other items that's actually added to that category of screening, identification, and risk is, uh, we're exploring the process of adding PBIS, which, as you know, has been successfully run down the middle school, um, or down at the elementary school, that, uh, we're just beginning the process of exploring that with our middle school team, and, and having conversations about how that might work. And it's important for us in, in the process of accreditation, where down there, they have the HAWX acronym, and that HAWX acronym has created for them a set of core values and beliefs that they adhere to, and then they celebrate, um, exemplary status within each of those, that we need to go through that process and through the remainder of the school year, and hopefully it'll also align with our newly developed core values, you know, things like integrity, respect, um, equity, responsibility, these are all things that we identify as a school community, not just faculty, but parents and students made substantial contributions to these, to that language, and so we should have buy-in in that process revisioning. So, whatever it is that we look to do in, in terms of, um, rewarding behaviors that we expect to see, um, and, and expect to see done well, uh, that hopefully will have that same type of alignment that they have down at the elementary school. Um, there are a couple of other...
Hey, Berman?
Yes?
So, I'm just curious, if you have any thoughts on the cause of a consistent tardiness?
Um, I think it's just a, it's a lack of emphasis in, in a, in a school community, whether that comes from this, the, from me, as, as the school administration, that, you know, we, we've had five tardies in place for a long period of time, um, as being something that we allow before we put a sanction in place. Um, in other school districts that I've worked, it's been three in the course of a semester, and so maybe we need to reduce it, because clearly people, families and students don't, aren't emphasizing, um, or don't have the sense of emphasis for the value of punctuality. I mean, as, as, you know, we all know, not showing up on time for a job is the quickest way to lose your job. And so, if, if we're not effectively making that point, we're not effectively using our student code of conduct, it's not a minimal thing, and I appreciate the fact that, again, I get to collaborate with somebody like Ms. Camuso, who, um, you know, has made that a point of emphasis by pointing out that data.
And it's important for them to know the, the sort of negative consequences of tardiness, and also, important to learn the positive consequences of showing up on time.
Hmm.
Like, all the rewards, the, the early bird does really catch the worm, and so, um, it, it, you could get pretty creative about how to reward their arriving on time.
Figure worm budget.
Just one more thing, I don't want to, I wouldn't want to excuse tardiness, uh, I just also wonder if this ties into the conversation you were having about start time for school. Uh, my kids are starting school an hour later here, they haven't been tard once, uh, just makes it easier.
Good point.
So, something to think about.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, we also included, uh, I included an item in here about the, the addition, uh, that the school committee had in terms of increasing the time of the school adjustment counselor from a .5 to a .8 FTE. That adjustment counselor currently has 14 students specifically either in check-in, check-out, check-out circumstances on a regular basis, or, um, on behavior plans, uh, and an overall caseload of 25 students that they're seeing on a regular basis. And so, that's significant, substantially more students than we were able to provide services for. Um, and we're seeing improvements in, in behaviors and, and, um, you know, specifically from some students who are, have been really challenged, they found the, um, the support to be something that's allowed them to be able to, to make improvements and thrive and build confidence. So, that's been a great change for us as well. Climate and cultural programming is also a category, everything from the fact that we went to the Massachusetts Commission on Discrimination as an administrative team, uh, and completed their work last year, to the trained active bystanders, the civic dialogue training, um, that's being put in place with CES, our partnership, and I also shared this detail with you last, last year in a, in a PowerPoint that was part of that NEAS presentation, uh, the work of the Gender Equity Task Force last year in terms of our programming, as well as rolling out the hashtag, um, Recognize Sexism campaign, uh, all of those were important cultural issues. And then, um, equitable enforcement of the student code of conduct, you know, I acted quite unilaterally since I've gotten here, as, as there had been, uh, a dean of students in the past, and so there was at least somebody to bounce some things off of, and I think it's really important that, uh, in dealing with discipline, one, not only do we stick with the handbook, but we treat it like we do common law, that we, um, we follow through with a degree of consistency, uh, with regard to penalties that are related to particular offenses, and having the opportunity to bounce something off of a member of the faculty who is willing to hold me accountable with a degree of honesty, respect, and dignity, has been very helpful in through the first part of the school year, for us to, uh, really have a clear sense of, you know, I leave a conversation with a colleague, and I know exactly what it is that I'm doing, and, um, instead of just making a unilateral decision, being able to bounce that off of somebody, that, that level of calibration has worked really well for us, and I think ultimately serves students well. Safe reporting for students, um, the Gender Equity Task Force completed a review of, uh, gender equity concerns in athletics, uh, and left feeling that the school committee, that, um, the athletic director, that the boosters are very attentive to, uh, spending money, uh, on the athletic program with a sense of gender equity. And Mr. Sudnick, I also wanted to congratulate for taking steps in the past, you have done things like making sure even the boys' team was, even though the boys' team was a little bit stronger, making sure that the, the pep band was committing their time also as well, and the cheerleaders as well, to celebrating the girls' teams, and of course, we're in a slightly different situation this year, congratulations to the girls' team, who has a home playoff game tomorrow night, um, but he was attentive to make sure that the, uh, really lesser of the two teams was getting as much attention, uh, this year as well. So, I'm really pleased with how he has paid attention to those seemingly small details in a way that I think a lot of people might just disregard, um, that he's, he's made that sort of a core value of what he does. The Faculty Reporting Network, we've sent out intermittently, uh, I send it out in emails, and you can see we have it posted up around the building. Ms. Camuso and I know that we'll, we'll need to work with student leaders to rework that for next year, and we actually have had an inquiry from another school who was very pleased with the, um, the work that was done on our dress code, and in particular, the process, that they have a pretty significant numbers, number of people on their faculty who are, you know, uh, let's say, as a math teacher, might be overly concerned about a spaghetti strap showing, and are totally willing to call out a kid in front of peers, and their students are beginning to push back at it, and so they've reached out to us to say, hey, are there still some student leaders who might be willing to come up and work with some student leaders at our school? So, once we get that, um, that opportunity going, hopefully Jack Kelly, our student representative, will come back and provide a report on the opportunity that our, our student and faculty leaders are providing to spread that information out and, and those processes out into other schools. So, I'm pleased with what we've been able to do, and we'll, we'll have the follow-up committee sign off on this and upload it on Friday.
Thank you, bud.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Budget.
Christian Stanley, what are you even waiting for?
I just, I just came in general, in general, because most of the school leaders...
It's a shocker, though, topic.
Wake me up, now, keep calling.
Thank you very much. So, I, Chris and I provided kind of an update of where we're at, there, I did attend select board, I think it was, it was at Good Time?
It was, yeah, yeah.
Last week, the week before?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
Three weeks ago.
And at that meeting, Mr. Nixon presented his budget to the select board. We had submitted a request of an increase of essentially $331,000, and, um, the date Mr. Nixon, the budget that he presented to the select board, had an increase in local contribution of essentially $184,000, 183,875. So, it is less than we had requested, although it is an increase of 2.6%, and I do respect greatly that the town, that Mr. Nixon, that the select board, are trying to meet many, many, many demands, so it is no easy task. I do appreciate all the work that they've put into that. So, with that new number, we have had some good news, as we've explained to the town, uh, these numbers are, it's very early in the game. So, although the request we put forth to the town at this point is less than we had originally requested, we did find out that the preschool grant, the $30,000 and $3,000 that, or $30,000, um, that we had eliminated from the budget, they've now said that this is the last year, so we weren't the only ones confused, I got an email from a neighboring district that said, wait a minute, are we getting the money or not? I said, it appears that we are, so we have put that back in. Uh, we did reduce, because we know what we're getting through Title I and Title II, you noticed, we originally budgeted for 74,000, but actually, we're getting closer to 66,000, that has to do with the community's wealth increasing, because those are tied to community wealth. So, it is good news for families, that all in all, our families are better off financially, but it does have a negative impact on those title grants. Circuit breaker estimation has not changed, that could very well change, but it hasn't changed at this point. We doubt, we reduced the amount of title money because we know it's going to be less. Uh, our 160, which is our 240, no, it's right in front of me here, our 240, that has remained the same. School choice applied has remained the same, pre-K revolving hasn't changed in this iteration. You see the 391, that preschool grant, we added back in $30,000, and the 262 grant hasn't changed. So, our total grant revenue funds, we estimate at this point to be at roughly 1.2 million. Our total revenues would be local contribution plus that, essentially 8.5. Our budget is just over 8.6 right now, which leaves us with $125,000 deficit roughly. I'm not excited about that at this point, because it's so early in the game, it's just so early in the game. So, we are, we still are waiting to find things out, mostly about special education, there are a lot of shifting parts in special education right now, um, some, so there's just a lot of shifting parts. We don't know what circuit breaker reimbursement is going to be yet, that's why circuit breaker could change, and, as you know, our, um, which doesn't affect our applied, but the school choice revenue side of things, I just do a very rough estimate, graduate out the seniors, and that's all I do. So, things are still, and also, we don't know what our new hires will cost in history, chemistry, physics, right? We don't know what those will cost, and so, um, we'll see, there could be cost savings there, I can't guarantee it, given the specialization of some of those areas, but, that's why early in the game. But even though there's a big red box that says a deficit of $125,000, I'm here to tell you, I'll let you know when we should be excited, we should not be excited right now, just enjoy the colors, we really should not be excited at this point.
If that shows up in the lunch section of the detailed reports...
Well, then that is Chris's problem, because I, when I give lunch reports, I feel like there's a lot of money in that account.
You know what I'm thinking, is maybe in the future, Ann should do the lunch report again.
Yes. I just say, everyone relax, no, it's really, it's fine. And I know that the town is also working, but I just want to thank the town for the work they put into this, it is not easy. Every department head comes air with competing, competing demands, and by gosh, we all think we're the most important person in the room, so it's not an easy task, and you all do a really nice job of listening to us and working hard to try to balance all of those competing demands, so thank you. And I also know, as Mr. Nixon has said, the numbers on his side are also preliminary, because we're, right now, he's working off of the governor's, the cherry sheet right now, right? So, we have very preliminary numbers on his side as well.
Great, there was no actual...
Hey, Ann?
Yep.
I'm just gonna say, I get a ring, I get a ring up, I promise not to get excited about the budget.
Yeah.
Is that better?
I usually get very excited, I won't get excited now.
You can actually, uh, perhaps show the folks in New Zealand, this is how it's done in the United States, this, just don't get excited.
It's really similar here, yeah. But I'll see you next time, thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
All right.
I don't know how to turn them off, I guess you turn them off. Okay.
At the bottom, you got it.
Okay.
All right, uh, G, capital plan.
Okay, the girls' locker room, estimator?
Okay, so the girls' locker room. Okay, so the girls' locker room.
Okay.
We've, we've really struggled with the girls' locker room.
The question, just, just as a reminder, and if we don't have the information for tonight, we may just be updating you on this, because I know Chris has been trying hard to get this information, the select board, we have a placeholder on the warrant, because the school committee is going to decide, how much is this to get the estimate, and, um, do we need to ask the town for help? So, there's a placeholder right now, and it may be that you're not deciding that tonight. Chris?
Uh, probably not, because I just checked my email and I got no response. So, we, uh, we attempted to get an estimate for the job from one vendor, that we, you know, we were given the name of this company, after a few phone calls and delays in getting a response from them, I finally managed to speak to the person I needed to, who told me they could absolutely do our estimate for our job sometime in, uh, the summer of 2020. So, I said thank you, but no thank you, um, moved on, I got the name of another company that might, uh, be able to do this, there were more... They were more local, so that was, I thought, better. And after several back and forths, again, I reached out to them and I said, listen, I really need to get some kind of a price on what you will charge us for this estimate. And they responded, this project is a lot more involved than we thought it would be. Thank you for the opportunity, but we can't do the job. Try this company. So, so I tried the next company, they're in Boston, and I've emailed them asking, you know, basically, give them a brief outline of what we're looking to do and the fact that I need an estimate for your estimate, more or less, at this point in time. I have not heard back from them yet, so at this point in time, we have no, no estimate whatsoever on how much, you know, it may cost us to get that. This is, this is proving to be quite a challenge, just to get, get a price on how much this project could cost us. And, and the reason, you know, being that we need a revised price is just because, you know, the price that we had was 10 years old, so obviously that's way obsolete. If these people in Boston don't get back to me in the next couple of days, I'll reach out again and I will also reach out to the company that did the original plans. I'm thinking maybe they might be willing to do it. Then after that, we're really going to have to try something really outside the box because I just don't know, you know, what else we can do. Again, getting a price from a contractor is just a tricky thing because you can't expect the guy to, you know, go through these plans and spend really hours and hours to come up with an estimate and then tell him, well, thank you very much, now we may or may not do this project and you may or may not get it because we're going to go out to bid, you know? And so it's, it's really a good way to make enemies with the area contractors and it's, it's quite honestly not fair to them. So we'll, we'll keep plugging away, quite honestly, at trying to get a price for this.
I have a question. Do these contractors have to have special certifications to do this kind of job?
They do need to have, they need to be DCAM certified. It's a, it's a state certification level because, well, I assume anyway, because of the cost of the job. And, and I'm pretty confident that it will be above that. The cost is 150,000 and above, so it, it should definitely, you know, be above that level. What we are looking to get for this pricing, because the plan's called for both the boys' and girls' locker room to be done, what I want from them is a price to do the girls' and then the girls' and boys' together. So that way we can see if it's something where, you know, we need to get the girls' done now, let's get it done and we can move on to the boys at a later date, or might it be, you know, to our financial advantage, to do them both at once, which, which should in theory be cheaper because they're here, all the tools, everybody's here, you know, so they can, they can just jump on both of them. But again, it would just be, you know, kind of an option for us anyway, if nothing else. So, you know, like I said, we'll keep plugging away. We know we have to get this done and.
It sounds like a bit of a chicken and the egg. It's too bad that there isn't some other way, like a contingency, some kind of funding that the town can say, okay, here's, here's an amount, rough amount, now put it out to bid. And so then it's at least increasing the odds that whomever's bidding has a chance of getting the job.
Yeah, you know, the, the thing about this is, and, and it really is, the chicken and the egg, the horse and the cart, I mean, there's so many things you can use for it and, and we just experienced this in Ware. We are going for MSBA funding for windows, new windows in a school and a boiler, and we needed estimated pricing. And again, how do you get that? We don't even have plans for this yet. So MSBA had some pricing available on their website. I think the window pricing they gave us was 1.2 million and then after the plans were done, they came with an estimate, it was 3.5. And, and of course, you know, I mean, that's, that's a big difference. And, you know, and so people asked, why were we given this price? Well, again, you can't just get a price. It's, it's really a complicated thing. Excuse me. And I actually told my boss, I said, what they need is to have some kind of company working for MSBA or, you know, or any kind of school project funding like this that could give you an estimate and really just keep things moving a heck of a lot quicker, you know?
To just do bids.
So if anybody out there is, you know, looking to start a company, contact MSBA.
One other question I have, what if we were to look at Massachusetts and Connecticut schools that have recently had their lockers, their girls' lockers in particular redone and take a sort of square foot approach at estimating and taking that to.
Maybe, you think you might be able to tell them the superintendents or something?
I can do that. I also was thinking, we can contact LPVEC. You know, they do more building than CES. It's kind of their, they're like.
Yeah, you can try that.
At least we can stop the cycle, the chicken and egg cycle. Yeah, or can start with something, concrete data. Sure.
I was gonna say, too, I can talk with Phil, who is our OPM on the senior center and on the fire service station.
Yeah.
And see if he knows.
That would be great as well, yes.
And if he knows anybody, I can just give your contact info.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yep.
Christian, you should come more often. Okay. And speaking of building, so MSBA statement of interest, this is, here's the timeline. We are submitting a statement of interest on April 9th. In that statement of interest, we will include our priority project, the girls' locker room, and a secondary project, the UNIVENTS. The UNIVENTS on the capital plan are, we don't have those on the capital plan for quite a while, but it's a project that felt appealing to MSBA. By submitting this statement of interest, what we do when we submit the statement of interest and a part of that statement of interest, it is required that you take a very specific vote with senior packet that essentially is just acknowledging that you know that we're submitting a statement of interest. And the select board has to take the same vote so that Chris and I can't go about writing in building projects to the state saying we want funding without the elected officials saying, yes, we actually do want to do those projects. What happens in terms of timeline, we submitted on April 9th. It could be that MSBA then identifies our project as a project that they want to learn more about. They could potentially come out and visit and look at the project if they're unfamiliar. They may be familiar because you did an MSBA project for the roof on this building. So they may be familiar with us, but they may come out and visit. And then they invite applicants in, in December. So they invite, or slightly before that, they invite you to apply. That, that essentially, the, when they've invited you to apply, they're looking to fund your project. They make this distinction right now between a statement of interest and an actual application because they don't have, know how much money they have and they don't know how many people, it's one, one cent of sales tax, I think, is how they fund it. So it's, they don't have the exact amount of funding yet. They'll know that and then they have to see how many people apply. And then they make decisions about the types of projects that people are looking for and they decide which ones they think are high priority or greatest need. But once they say you're invited to apply, that's pretty much a signal you're going to get the funding. So the statement of interest doesn't mean a thing. They make you say, I understand, there's no guarantee that we'll get this. And then, once we do that, we need to follow every step that they lay out. It's pretty complicated, but they're, they're there every step of the way in terms of they require that you put together a building committee. They require that the building committee has representation from the town side, from the school committee side, and it isn't just school department personnel. So they have certain requirements that they expect you to adhere to. And then they, they have funds available for feasibility studies, schematic design, schematics and designs. I did say, well, what if we already have designs for the project? They say, well, we, you have to have somebody that looks at those designs. There's certain composition to the building committee that also includes kind of designers and project managers and they look at your current designs and decide, yeah, those are fine, we can go ahead with those, or they make other recommendations. Again, you can use MSB funding, MSBA funding for each part of this. And then if we are selected by MSBA for funding, I ask, so how much funding can the district anticipate receiving? And there's a factor, the floor is 31%, 31 cents on the dollar for the project, the ceiling is essentially 80 cents on the dollar, 80%. She suggested that we look back at what we received on our last project. Hadley received 49% or 49 cents on the dollar on the last project. And so that probably has a margin of error. I would, I would guess if anything, it would be slightly less because of factors that they do, each town gets, it's not a set amount for the entire state. So it has to do with the community's wealth. So for example, Chris had mentioned, where's MSBA project, they're being funded at 80% for a project that they submitted for last year. This is a new round of funding. There, Desi has the wealth factor for every community, Desi gives where a one and out of five and Hadley a four. So where, well, now I can get 80%. I don't know if our wealth factor has changed since our last project, but somewhere around 49%. So our goal is to get this in. Hopefully we're invited to apply. We would still be moving forward because if we don't get the funds, we, it doesn't come off the capital plan. But there certainly is the hope that it would be a lot less, it would be half the cost for the town, is the goal of doing this. The vote is in your packet.
We need to read it as is.
Is that the motion? That is, that is the box. That is it. You may read it, I am happy to read it. It's pretty chunky language, but that is, that is the vote. Am I allowed to read it? You are absolutely right.
Are there any questions before we move forward?
No, I think this is a great opportunity.
Yeah. All right. Resolved, having convened in an open meeting on February 25th, 2019, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the school committee of Hadley, Massachusetts, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated April 9th, 2019, for Hopkins Academy located at 131 Russell Street, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future, girls' locker room and UNIVENTS projects. These projects are the redesign and update of girls' locker room and replacement of old malfunctioning heating UNIVENTS and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits the city, town, regional, school district to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Is there a, do we need a walkall vote?
No, no.
Okay. Is there a motion to move forward as stated?
Move to do that.
Second. Someone favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right.
So we, we will need the Board of Selectmen, basically, to do that same vote. Because you're here and you know the length of this two-sentence resolution, you can step out of the room for a minute when they're looking for somebody to read it.
I thought you memorized. I'd like to meet the superintendent that just goes out and applies for building projects without their school.
All right. Phase one, field.
Yes. So I think most of this, right now, we have some updates for you regarding discussion over land ownership, but some of that and the school committee's response to that is done in executive session because it has to do with property and acquisition.
Got it. All right. Transportation, update on the bid process and single tier option.
And so my question before Chris can tell you his update on the bid process, but what would you, if I were to ask families, so what we're looking at on a single tier, we've gone out to, our bid includes, as, I'll say it, as Chris has said, doing two tiers or doing one tier, so they're both in the bid. But in terms of getting feedback from families, if you want me to get family feedback so you can look at making a final decision around start times, when you have bid information as well, we're looking at a start time, Hadley Elementary would not really change at all, maybe a couple of minutes, and Hopkins Academy would move up to about eight o'clock, or shortly after eight o'clock. The big change is it's a single tier, so all the students are riding together, similar kinds of stops, but all students are together. Is there information you would like me to ask directly from families to bring back to you for consideration?
My only question would be, would it impact a parent's decision to put or not put their child on a bus?
Okay.
If, I'm just curious, would you still continue taking the bus if this change were in place?
And I wonder if it should be asked in the context of, you know, from both sides, in terms of high school students, will it increase the chances that your child will actually catch the bus?
Yeah.
In light of the fact that it'll probably be substantially later.
So I can go system, basic questions around overall impressions, does a change like this feel positive layout? Here's, here's the real change. The real change is about delaying the start time. And, and it's, we'd really, we could do this in a way that is more economical. So, you know, how do you feel about that change? And then how do you feel about ridership changes? I will point out to families that those children who are taking the late bus, which there's a good handful of children that use the late bus, we do have mixed ridership in the occupants.
I'm wondering if, you know, I, I'm looking for a forum that would invite parents who feel strongly about this one way or another, to feel like they have a, a place that they can come in and talk about this. We've had somebody come in during public comment and talk about the research behind the start time and why we should change it. I've not heard the opposite and I'm just, I don't know whether we need a deliberate agenda item on a school committee meeting and kind of making sure people are aware that this is actively being discussed and we would value your input either way because I, I just, I would worry that somebody would, you know, feel like they didn't have an opportunity to be heard.
Yeah, this is, I, I think that this is a conversation that, like, we, obviously people don't show up to our school committee meetings, but if this was something that, no offense, if this was something that people, that people had more headway on, so if this was something that would be like a superintendent's email or something like that.
So how about in March, just because I'm mindful too, if we're going to do something and, and budget wise, is it, does it make sense to really try to, this is an opportunity, this is what we're considering, please come in and talk to us.
We want your feedback.
We want you here.
Yes.
Because when would we need to vote on this?
Well, we're going to do public hearing on the budget in April and, but it's not as much the budget as it is more just people feeling like they have a chance to talk about it. So really, anytime before the end of the year. And once with the bid is opened, I'm sorry, we only have, we have to award the contract within a month?
Thirty days, yeah. And that, and that decision would, would change the bid that we're putting, that we're asking.
That we select.
Right. We're putting on four bids, actually.
Right, for the different options.
Right, we're, you know, one tier and two tier the way it is now with the buses split between the town and the vendor, and then one tier and two tier with the vendor doing all of the roads. And so hopefully, you know, companies will bid on all four of them. It'll just give us a, a better choice and then we can decide how we want to handle that.
And what's the closing date on those bids?
The ad is in the newspaper, it's posted on the state website, I think it went in today, actually, on the state website. The bids have to be back into us by March 20th. That's when we open, March 20th.
Yeah, so you could, you could hear from parents.
So we would vote in our April meeting.
Yes, correct.
Yeah. So here, have people have a part of our meeting in March and then in April would be our deciding meeting where we would vote and select the transportation. And we would have the information of the financial aspects.
For the April meeting.
For the April meeting.
And we would be able to make sure to solicit information to parents other than in our agenda.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. And also I would be, superintendent weekly email, I would probably send, I'd send the survey out maybe within that and separately, I'd make sure it was, the parents were getting that information.
Perfect.
All right, so we'll put it in.
That sounds great.
You guys get to pick a calendar.
These were fun to look at. All right, the 1920 calendars. So we have some options here.
So the biggest change is in draft A, we do what we always do, we come back the day after New Year's Day, which happens to fall on a Thursday. That's not a big deal. We, we have two-day weeks with students sometimes, but that also means, again, assuming no snow days, I never thought I'd say, well, that will never happen, but so far this year it might happen. That, school ends on a Monday, right? With no snow days in June, if you come back on Thursday. And then the other one, I just looked at it and said, oh, well, I suppose we could just have a full two-week break around, at the end of December, we could have a full two-week break through New Year's and then school ends on Wednesday in that scenario. That's really the only difference. And of course, the quarter dates change slightly depending on when your vacation ends. And I ran it by Dee, I said, what do you think families would think? And we said, well, here's, they could like this or they could not like this. And I said, guess what? Give me two and the school committee would choose.
Thank you. I'd rate it by a student at Hopkins.
Your focus group?
My focus group of one. Now, I mean, to your point, it seems like if we were going to be ending on a Monday, and in order to extend the, the break over the holidays, because the holidays fall right in the middle of the week, to have two full weeks and still get out of school the same week, you know, just a Wednesday and a Monday. Yeah, I was in favor of Draft B, to offer families that two weeks of time holiday-wise, to not split it up and come back on January 2nd. So you're basically adding two days at the end of the year in order to gain two days and a weekend over the holiday time. And I think, I don't know, I know people's work schedules are all different and they may need more coverage because we're not coming back to school on the second. I know I don't get, I don't think I get the second off, but it seemed like there's, I don't know what attendance is usually like this year, you know, right when we came back? When do we come back this year, January?
Uh, the, actually, this year's calendar is the final calendar that was in there, and we came back, we came back on the second on a Wednesday.
Yep.
So we came back on a Wednesday.
Yeah, my, just devil's advocate, less about, of course, the students would be happy to have two full weeks off, but the hardship on, on parents for two weeks for working, parents that might be more hard in the middle of the winter to do that rather than then in school on a Monday, which may possibly be changed due to snow days anyways.
Yeah. It's true, and I, I mean, if, the weather is pretty unpredictable, right, so if we did have five full days, there, essentially, they'd be getting out that last weekend in June. So it takes away from the one month.
Well, the 24th would be the last day if there were five snow days. So 19th is otherwise.
Just to put it out there, I'm personally more in favor of going back on the second, just to not as, make as much of a hardship, because if parents do have time off in that break, then they probably don't have off Thursday and Friday. Just my two cents.
I also think, you know, there's the plus side of starting back after vacation with a half week or like a very short week, it makes it a little bit easier to ease back in, kind of like our Augusts.
Yeah, Martin Luther King holidays a little bit later, the 20th this year, so that, sorry, in 2020, so they would have it over the holiday coming up after they come back.
Right, and if you look at that from an alternative, just to point that out, if you started school on the 6th, then they'd have one full week of school, and then the following week, they'd have a day off and a half day, so they'd only have one week back, and then you, you'd have more time.
So what are we thinking? A or B?
It's a lose-lose, right?
Yeah. I mean, I really could go either way.
Yeah.
But I, I think I'm more in favor of a longer summer vacation for them, getting out of school earlier, earlier in June, and having it be an easier time getting back to school in January when it's cold and miserable and no one wants to go back to school, having a couple of days rather than a whole week is just, I know it'll be easier on, on my home front.
I agree. I can go either way.
I can go either way, this is, person is going to be harder on my home front, but I mean, that's just one guy.
Yeah, for me, I was looking at people that travel over the holidays, being able to kind of maximize that last weekend and having, having a longer break over that time. But that's, you know, and I, and I think that my poll of one, that was what, what their opinion was too, was kind of like, on the second, how much, you know, my friends are not going to be back at school necessarily, what, you know, not, my friends that aren't here in this district, why are we going back as early as the second?
I don't know what other, I don't know what other calendars are doing, just know that, we don't, because other people haven't set their calendars, so I don't know what they will do, but.
I always have a hard time with the idea of going back to anything, whether it be a work trip, or school, or a vacation, or anything in the middle of a week, especially towards the end. Like, if somebody's like sick on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and they show up to work on Friday, like, seriously? Why did you come to work on Friday?
Is there a way to tell, so looking back at the calendar you gave us for this year that we approved in May, so we open back up on Wednesday, the second? Do we know, like, do we have a high number of absences?
So I can get any data that you want, it's okay if you approve the calendar next month, I just didn't want to forget, this is another one of those things that.
I think families appreciate having it as early as possible.
And they came to Mr. Burns and said, hey, we're going to do the calendar, so there's an idea. I completely didn't think about it. So I can get data on attendance, I can also ask other school districts if they've set their calendar, we can have a copy of it.
I mean, for, for me, I, Stanford goes into shutdown for like an extra week, and so I have the time off, we can totally manage it, but I do think it could become, it's a very privileged thing that I, that I have that flexibility and that my, you know, other half doesn't, is at home, and so, but.
But I mean, either way, you're going to be, trying to get, like, whether the parents are going to be needing to take the time off in the middle of the winter or the summer, it's going to be.
No, I think, I feel like, if you're not from a position of privilege, that you have summer accommodations that you have to make anyways.
Right.
And so those are, those are things that you're prepared for and you can manage, but it's not, not the case necessarily the week after Christmas and New Year's.
And it may be a hardship for some families to get time off around that time, as you say, if companies are closed, that's easier, but, you know, if the company doesn't close and you're expected to go to work, it does.
Right, or if you're an hourly turner, if you're in the service.
Exactly. It means that that would be challenging.
It's hard to make those decisions based on our, yeah, our experiences and our preferences.
Because then Draft A, if there's the five school days, you're asking them to come back to the last day of school on a Monday.
Right.
Who's going to come to school for the last day on a Monday, is that going to, how, like, how actually dependent would that be?
Last days tend to be fun, and you're giving, you know, with teacher gifts and carting all your stuff out of school, and so I, I can envision that I could push my kid out the door easily on Monday if it's the last day of school.
So on Calendar B, Draft B with the last day with five snow days, let's be pessimistic here, Jan 24th, how does that butt up against, like, graduation and other, because I forget how that factors?
Sure, so 12th, they, it's not the snow days, it's 12 days from the last scheduled day of school, so on, I should have done that for you, so on Draft B, 17th.
Yeah.
So, yeah, you would still have, well, the fifth would, you would have, you'd be plenty, the first Friday, you'd be well within the law on the fifth, and I think in both drafts on the fifth, you're well within the law.
So do either of these drafts impact when graduation would need to, because I know, like, the last conversation we had about what establishing this graduation date, we wanted to be sure we weren't, like, disadvantaging the seniors by keeping them here so long, right? And scheduling it at the best opportunity.
So on Draft A, you would have the option within the law of setting graduation for the 29th, the last Friday in May. So law is, has to be within 12 days of the last scheduled day, you don't have to worry about snow days, and you've met the regulations, so you're still doing this as I look at it, so you're absolutely within those 12 days on that last Friday.
Okay.
Because their senior week counts as their time in school. On Draft B, the last Friday in May becomes, if, now, we've typically always done the first Friday in June, I made that exception this year because of how the calendar fell, but that last Friday then technically has you at 13, right? Yeah, that's 13 days, that last Friday, it's not 12 days.
So they have the eighth.
So, no, to the, it'd be the first Friday in June.
Got it.
And would either of these have any impact on E S Y or anything like that?
No, no.
All right, do we want to have a little bit more information about absentees, or do we feel like we can decide this now?
Because one thing, just before I close up and I don't sound like I could be down on this, I learned a hard lesson with the last, with our previous union president, Mr. Horgan, our school psych, this is one of those things that you don't want to open it up to too much input. Data is good, but you don't, yeah, lesson learned the hard way. Not that I don't value opinions on the big survey, Gal, as you guys know, but, because there's not going to be one solution that everyone says, that's great, and then once they were invited in and then it was, and, you're not going to get that. It's just, it's just easier to kind of say, this is where we're going. But more data, sure, I just wouldn't, if you were thinking, I wouldn't open it up.
Survey this.
Could be circumstantial, it could have been a really bad flu year, and it's circumstance.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what data we could be.
No, the only thing I was thinking was more, if we come back the second, has history shown that kids don't show up, that there are absences, that kids are called in anyways because, like this year, it fell in the middle of the week.
And the only other thing I would say is if you wanted me to ask for calendars from other districts, which hadn't been said yet, but will be something next month if that interests you.
Yeah, or we can go with, I'm, I'm fine going with Draft A, that seems to be where we're leaning with the, with the consideration that May 29th being a graduation date, I think that's great.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's where I'm, I'm leaning.
We get to that?
I could, yeah, I could defend or throw down, or, yeah, either one of these.
All right. Just curious, before you, we're going to do, the, the same thing's going to apply for the following year, it looks like, annual town elections is a school day, and then the curriculum day falls on off.
Yeah, so next year, annual town elections.
Will be no curriculum day.
And then after that, the senior center will be built and elections will move.
Okay.
Yeah, parents will be much happier with that because of security.
Listen, Christian, like, no, I just spoke it loudly, and, I spoke it loudly, and no one could hear your rebuttal. Kind of select board member was present.
In 2020, if they are here, you gotta, you gotta have that day not be a school day, if that's.
They've both counted.
Yeah, but you would not have 2020 calendar yet. Or that will be 2020.
That is 2020, April.
But then until November.
No, I don't have that one, never. The senior center will be open, so that's good.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion, or do we want to table this to next?
Motion to, to stick with the current pattern of going back to school the day after New Year's.
Perfect. Second.
All on favor?
Hi. All right, we have a calendar.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do you mind adding in their graduation?
Yes, I need to know that.
Okay, well, another thing people like to plan for.
Yes.
And that is a definitive, that won't change based on snow days, is what you just said, so that's.
No, so it is.
So they can plan that now, eleven.
That's fine, and so we're going to say that the school committee is in Draft A, set the graduation date, because technically you're supposed to vote on that, which I just discovered last year, remember?
This year.
And you're going to evaluate me in a minute. Graduation date, 5/29.
That's going to be such a great week because it's Memorial Day week, so.
I don't want graduation day, so, okay, I, we don't want it the Friday before Memorial Day, but I did that.
It's the Friday after.
Right.
Which means families can come visit and stay.
Perfect, okay, good deal. All right, school choice. You have slots recommended, so what you are voting on, you have to vote annually to participate, we already have applications for next year, and then you have to start by voting on slots, we can always revisit these, right? But we have to in case we have more applications than we have spaces available. So what you, your current grade, so you see your enrollment as of February 1st, the grade, the estimated enrollment for the next year, which we're assuming the cohorts are just staying the same, that could change while we're moving every cohort up, and then you can see the slots available, and where that puts the new total for the grade. We just divided the grades by two or three depending for rough class estimates. So this is, this was given to each of the principals, and they went over their numbers and made recommendations, they spoke with their teachers, and made some recommendations for school choice slots.
I just had two questions.
Sure.
One is, if you could talk about why grade three is at zero when other comparable sizes classes have slots available? And the other question is about grade nine, whether, we, we have historically seen a pretty large drop-off. It seems like kids choicing out in grade nine, whether we should, you know, basically approve more slots.
Yeah, so the, so I'm going to work backwards, that grade nine is a, is a really, is a good point, I mean, we could certainly say, we could certainly.
Like 47 going from grade eight into grade nine, I, I think, you've applied and presented in the past, where we've seen it, just, you know, they, they go, they go to other schools, so.
Right.
Well, historically, what have we had open for seats for grade nine, and have we filled all the choice seats for them?
No, we've never filled all the choice seats.
So is it something that, I feel like in the, in the past, can we approve on a case-by-case basis too if needed, like, if we don't open up more?
You can approve case-by-case, so what you would do is you could decide that, so we've had, this has happened since you all have been here, so we've had additional seats, we've come back, what you've decided is to open up additional seats.
Right.
So, which may be what you're asking me, but I just want to be clear for the public that the school committee does not review individual school choice applications ever, it's an entirely blind lottery process, and you just increase the number of seats. So yes, you can, I can always come back and say, we think we have more room in this grade, but to your point, I mean, we certainly can make that adjustment now in grade nine. We don't have at this point in time the same high number of students who hold applications for significant vocational at this point, that's, we're happy.
I mean, our goal is to keep them here.
Yeah, right.
I was thinking about, but historically, you're right.
And then you ask, so the teachers weigh in, and usually if they're saying, we, we don't want to open this grade for choice, it means that they've looked at the composition of student needs in that grade, and they have determined that based on the learning, behavioral, social, emotional needs of those students right now, that they, they are, they don't recommend accepting choice at that point for that grade. So it could be, sometimes a particular grade, although the numbers are small, the needs are great.
Yeah.
And I think they're particularly sensitive to that, too, going into three, because three is a huge, huge, huge and difficult transition year for students.
Yeah.
It's a lot more academic, it's just a game changer. I hope no second graders are watching this. They'll survive it and get to that after.
Definitely, in my six years, I've seen that.
Yeah.
It's a real corner.
It is, it is, it's very, it's just a whole different set of academic demands, it's the first M cash year, it's a whole different year.
I have a question about the, the rising sixth graders, that was the one that last year we opened up to have some slots rather than no slot whatsoever, does this represent holding fast at that same level, or is this a representation that we're increasing?
So.
Does Carrie have a forward 47 in sixth staying in this summer? But are you asking, I think you're asking about the current.
The, are you talking about the fifth grade going into sixth grade?
Going into sixth?
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you said.
That was the grade that we held fast, and then last year, we said, okay, fine, we'll just add a couple now that we have three, three rooms, and I want to know, are we holding fast to last year's level, or is this a proposal to increase?
So, I, yeah, I don't know.
Because it's three classes.
I don't know, and then, I should know that, I don't, but I would even invite you folks, if you look at that number per, per classroom, 17, 17, 18, I don't feel like that's a big jump from where we are currently, so maybe it is a slight increase.
I feel like this is the, after, this is the total plus what we voted to open, so I think it's a status quo of what we.
Trying to.
Two, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so we're, we're looking at trying to get that to these numbers of 17, 17, 18. I do feel as though that class, and so again, the teachers weigh in on this, and sorry, I can't answer your question directly, because I can't keep track of. I can't answer your question directly because I can't keep track of the school choice. We do get students in mid-year, we have in some of our upper grades, so it changes a lot. But I, I do think that the teachers, we have seen that, that group is settled considerably. From, remember when parents came to, I think before you folks were on school committee, when parents came, when that group was in third grade.
To.
Yeah. So, so if there is a slight increase, there may be a slight increase, but we've seen tremendous stabilization of that group. I don't feel like the numbers are that much bigger though.
It's like one student.
Yeah.
Oh, no, yeah, that's, that's, that's where they're at.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to add more to nine? I think you make a valid point.
If, you know, if you think that we're going to have drop off, which I think we will, I don't want there to be, but, you know, assuming that there will be, I'd just up the number of spots.
This goes here, I want to set it in the wrong place. So, yeah, so maybe we.
Put the estimated in a little more.
Yeah. I mean, even if you put it at 45 and put five, I, yeah.
If you open up five slots and we're not filling five slots historically and there's a consistent pattern of students leaving in grade nine, then it's not going to really harm to open up five slots versus three.
I actually would suggest, I would just make it six because of what I said about smooth applications. Just using that as a guide.
So we'll add, we'll make it six slots for ninth grade and drop the enrollment down to 44 estimated?
Yep.
So keeping it at 50 still in the grade?
Yeah.
All right. Any questions on this?
I thought you do have to vote.
Yep, zero motion.
Move to increase the slots for school choice for the incoming grade nine to six?
Oh, the whole, the whole.
Okay, in that case, I'd move to participate in the school choice and adjust that ninth grade.
Your second? My second. All on favor?
Aye.
All right. We will participate in the school choice.
Yep, we will.
Doors are open. Okay, superintendent formative evaluation.
This, I hope it's pretty straightforward, so goals are in the packet. I have provided you with an update on progress toward goals, where there's been significant, which is highlighted in green, some progress highlighted in yellow and why I assessed it that way. And I don't think I had any, my gosh, I fell down on the job. I don't think I had any no progress when I looked through this. I almost, I was concerned about a no progress on my collaborating with the town and community groups to host a community fair, but we have submitted, sir and I have submitted a grant. Quite hopeful we'll get funded. That would very much involve our community and is a, it's a career fair grant. So to put on a pretty involved career fair for the community. I think it was a strong application, so I moved that one from the red to the orange. I think that'll go right into green by the end of the year. My question for you, are, do you have concerns or are there things that you're worried about that you're saying, you know, need to see the ball move down the field a little more quickly or more?
I personally think that a lot of these are extremely time consuming and very evolved projects that to have made significant progress or met the, the goals already is, and to have ones that says some progress, that's a pretty expensive and collaborative task to take on.
I think one of the things that we've talked to you about in previous evaluations have been, you know, enabling the administration and the staff to, you know, lead certain activities and partner with you rather than having you feel like you have to carry something forward yourself. You've got a, a strong group of people that all want to support you and support these schools. And I think you've continued to bring to us examples of where, whether it's, you know, partnering with Sir Simmons on the, the grant for the, the career fair. That's exactly what, you know, I want to keep hearing, which is how they, you know, the staff and the administration can help support you in this community. So I appreciate that.
It's also fostering leaders too and allowing staff to learn and have guidance on how to improve and advance their leadership skills and never know what path they may want to take in the future.
We do have some, because you said that about the grants, so Mr. Burns and I submitted a curriculum, a history and social science curriculum evaluation and writing map that he worked with teachers across the district. And we got that, which is really amazing, given the fact that competitive priority was given to low performing districts. So I told him when we applied, this has been fun, I hope you enjoyed writing this for me. And you know, there were 105 proposals submitted and only 33 were funded and competitive, but we did get it and we've also submitted, and Ms. Coonan and I submitted an ELA grant. We have high hopes for that, since I had no hopes for the history grant. And now our high hopes for the career fair grant and the ELA grant.
Great.
Okay, you really, I mean, I think technically by the law, you can vote something, but for me, you're not required to. I just need to know if there was anything that you have concerns about. That's my primary thing. Is there anything that you have concerns about in terms of overall performance, things that you would like to see addressed, or are you concerned about critical work in the district that you would like the attention paid to it?
I think we're seeing progress in your goals. I think you've had an open dialogue with us about the things that, where they haven't maybe moved as forward as quickly as you would have liked, why? I think there's some bigger, longer term things that have come around that we're now, you know, really starting to realize. I mean, start time is one of them. You know, we began that dialogue a while back. We began the dialogue around building improvements a while back and relatively. And I think that it's, it's encouraging to see it. So I can't say that personally, I feel like our committee is left, you know, hanging on anything or in the dark on anything. You've been very diligent about, you know, either informing us where something is being held up or the process that needs to take place that takes time. So I appreciate that.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Keep it up.
All right. Your personnel report, there's a couple of resignations within new hires, replacements, mostly in educational support professionals. Otherwise, it's pretty quiet on that front.
So just a question, because we talked about history, chemistry, bio, are those positions that are expected to be posted or is that kind of a future? So we will post anticipated opening for the next school year. People understand that those, and the hiring times are right, probably we'll start that in March. March, early April is when we'll look to post teaching positions.
Okay.
So very soon. It'll say anticipated until the budget is approved. It may just post them as openings right now, but technically, you can't post for a position that you haven't funded.
Yeah, right.
But that's common across districts, right? They do this anticipated thing in the spring.
Yeah, yeah, it's very common.
Maybe, you know, again, like the early bird might catch the worm in the instance of getting it out there in the hands of people who are looking to make a change.
Absolutely. And people expect that and they know, and then when they come in and talk to us, we get said, look, our budget is, has always been funded.
Right.
The town has never voted down the school department budgets, so we're pretty confident that this will work out.
Okay. Public comment. Our publicist left. Chris, business manager report.
Okay, so first of all, is everyone comfortable with the temperature in here today?
Even I'm cold. And that doesn't happen.
I got a text from Jeff.
Are you paying the heating bill?
Jeff was watching the meeting and he said, there's nobody wearing hats, so I'm going to turn the heat down for the next meeting.
I didn't mention the word, we're going to blanket, so.
I know.
So anyway, the first item we have up is the, the expense report. Not really.
Well, since you said that.
I know. I've been like, underneath like.
I'll take it off my coat.
Again, not really a heck of a lot here in terms of excitement. I've been told often that dull is a good thing when you're presenting the expense report, so I guess you're looking at a pretty good thing here. You know, there's ups and downs throughout the accounts. Remember that we haven't yet done any transfers to school choice, so we have, you know, another 675,000 of expenses to transfer there. And we have, oh, probably another $200,000 or so, maybe closer to three of expense transfers to grants yet as well. So, you know, when you're looking at the $2 million we have to get us through the end of the year, it's really closer to three. And that's a very good position to be in at this point in time, and that the year is, you know, certainly more than halfway over. And, you know, for items like supplies and things like that, you know, we buy a lot of those in the summer. The other thing is that we also have a lot of money that's encumbered, so there's, you know, items like the heating fuel, we encumber for that amount right at the beginning of the year. So that's kind of considered to be spent, even though it really hasn't been spent yet.
And we can't feel it.
And apparently won't be spent because we're not using any of it, so.
It's not being spent at all. You're saving money.
Yes, Jeff, he's, he's pretty diligent at shutting down the heat if there's not going to be anybody in the building and, or if there's going to be a school community. So, yeah, you know, I don't know if you have any questions on this, but really, you know, again, as you know, if I'm getting nervous, I'll certainly tell you that. I'm, I'm not nervous at this point in time at all.
No questions here?
No.
Nope.
Okay. The next item we have is the grant report. Some grants have been fully expended. The 140 Title II A grant is all used up, as is the 262 grant for pre-K special ed. And there was one other one, I thought. Yes, the 391. The 391 is the preschool grant. We use that to offset some of the preschool director's salary. At one point in time, that would actually offset her entire salary, but they've been phasing this one out. And that was the mystery grant that we were told this was the last year of the mystery grant. And then Lauren applied for it and they also were questioning it in another one of my districts and nobody knew, are we getting this, are we not getting this? We thought it was the last year. So nobody's complaining.
I mean, that's a trick. They tell you the money's over, you just apply and then they think, oh, maybe they forgot to tell them.
So, you know, we've, we've used all of that for this year, but, you know, it is a fortunate situation that we will be getting it at least one more year, so that's, that's good news. But, you know, as you can see, it says amount remaining is 433,000, but that's if we used all of the circuit breaker. We really don't want to do that. So it's really dropping it more down towards the $300, $300,000 level. But still, you know, that's, that's a decent amount to have in the grants. And at the same time, we're chipping away at using them, so. I hesitate to present the next page. You will see actually a sizable increase in the, or I guess decrease, depending on the way you look at it, in the lunch account from November to December. I actually, you know, because if you look at October, November, we actually made a little bit of a gain. And then to have this big drop in December, I wondered what could have caused such a drop, you know, from one month to the next. We had a payroll on December 1st, so that was not reflected in the November, but it was $5,000-ish. And so, you know, that hit us on December 1st and then of course, we had, I think we had three payrolls in the month of December. So it's, it's just one of those timing things really that we had a big decrease at that point in time. I believe at this point, there are about $3,500 to $4,000 in negative balances for lunch accounts. Again, you know, this is, this is something that Diane grapples with on an annual basis and quite honestly, really kind of ramps it up toward May and June when the school year is ending and it continues right up until, you know, into July of recovering some of those funds.
Just a silly question, but are, are we positive that the, the POS system, school box or whatever it's called, is in fact like working correctly? I mean, it just seems, just, just.
It's a tough one. I mean, you know, we, we're getting all of the deposits in.
Yeah.
From them, because I am seeing that. You mean in terms of is it ringing up a correct order or is it?
In terms of getting the collection, like if they, if I'm paying with a credit card and putting 40 bucks on my son's account, is that actually flowing through to you? You know, in terms of?
It is. I mean, I can ask Diane to just kind of take a quick look and make sure that it's, for lack of a better term, registering everything correctly. And by that, I mean, you know, kind of at the POS terminal where.
Yeah, that's.
The other thing that you might want to do is look at different models. Are there other lunch purchase systems that when a child spends $3 on their meal, it comes right off the account like it would a debit card, rather than having to wait for a parent to add 20 or 40 dollars?
I think that's how this works is.
The current system works in the, in the way in which the parent has to refund an empty account.
Right.
You're just being charged against.
It's like easy cash is what you're thinking.
Could it work with debit cards?
Correct. So there's, I bet there are other models and other school lunch systems which might.
Yeah, there definitely are. Yeah, we can look into that as well, sure.
Because for some, that would help a great deal. A big part of those charges. I mean, there are folks who face actual financial hardship, but sometimes to your point, just like easy cash.
And that's a good conversation with their child of, you know, you're not getting school lunch because we don't have much. I mean, it's, you know what I mean? It's a more direct, you know, serving as an intermediary, floating a task.
Well, and there's a service charge every time you re-up on the school.
Exactly.
Yeah. So it's, I mean, it makes it more compelling to, you know, load up more so that you don't have to keep doing it, but that's not something that, you know, everybody can do.
Or someone avoids it.
Yeah. Or they don't re-up it at all.
So another, you know, maybe there is another model where they're not charging that transaction fee.
Somebody's gonna, it's, somebody's gonna end up paying for it.
Someone's gonna end up paying for it, but there are other business models. And I just don't know what the other options are. And we haven't looked in a while.
Yeah.
No, we haven't looked since we bought this one, so.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else on there revolving issues, Chris?
No, other than to tell you that if I ever win the lottery big, I'm going to donate to the lunch account just so I can, in your face, the superintendent to have a positive balance.
We would appreciate that. Please win the lottery.
I just got positive marks, being a good team player in your face.
All right, school committee reports and discussions. So policy group, we're meeting tomorrow.
We are.
Finally.
You're like 12 hours from now.
Seeing the size of that packet?
Oh, my gosh. I haven't looked at it yet. I'll do it tonight. Okay. Okay, so I guess that means that you guys will probably have first read then in March on a bunch of policies. So look forward to that. Finance tribe board, you already updated us on that. Capital and Fields, we talked about, we're doing Sasha on that CES, anything on the collaborative?
I shared with you at the beginning of February, an annual report. We've had some great data about their progress this last year. And just for viewer interest, there's 36 member school districts, 5,600 educators served through professional development that CES provides, 1,800 youth served and lots of other data. It's a high functioning organization. They do a lot and they continue to do more.
You mentioned the, the grant that you're applying for on the career fair. If by any chance that doesn't come through, does the collaborative have services to?
They do. We already work with them. They actually do. They have a lot of workforce development. We do get some funding through them currently and they do assist us with career and school to career.
And they are so responsive. So if we've had an idea, and Annie often does, she has a direct dial to Bill and sits on a team of other superintendents with Bill to say, here are our shared needs, can we put together a package? And so, yeah, just about anything that we can imagine, you know, wanting to share, they can put together for us.
Absolutely. Okay. There's one more schools committee thing.
Yeah.
Almost forgot. Designating a liaison for driver negotiations, assuming that that continues. So it can be one person, you don't need to have two people. I don't think I'm saying, because you've been done this before and they're very small negotiations. I can't remember who did it last time. It was you and was it Tara?
Us.
Us?
I feel like I did that with Joy.
Yes, 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 that was me. Okay. So we need a single, so we have to pursue all avenues simultaneously. So we need at least one person designated. And I'm going to go back to it. It should be one person designated, because then we won't run into the issues by about a warum. So.
Is there a volunteer? To head up your bus negotiation?
I wish I could. And you know how much I love doing negotiations in general. But I have a lot of travel coming up and I'm going to do my best to make these school committee meetings themselves.
Do we know when they are? I don't mind.
So we have done them in the past in the morning, but at the school committee's work schedule, that we would work around the school committee. So there's time during the day where they have a break. They were pretty contained during the day because it was between their two runs. So they were short meetings. It did wrap up pretty quickly and it was the first contract. So honestly, I don't, you know, I don't perceive it being terribly involved, but we respect the schedule. It's when everybody's available, the committee.
That's my only concern is that I don't know how much I'd be able to skip out in the middle of the day.
Yeah.
Or the morning.
Absolutely.
But I would have to do that if we can quickly wrap up.
Yeah.
When will this start up?
So once we've designated somebody, then I will reach out, including that school committee member, the Fred Dupre attorneys on both sides. Within, it's really the attorney's schedule, so I can't. In terms of start, it depends when the attorneys are available, which is.
But it's an immediate negotiation. Okay. What do you think? We should sign Paul for this.
Well, he's got the middle of it. That.
Yeah, you know. Why don't you put me down?
Put you down?
Yep. Unless anyone else wants to volunteer.
Thank you. Did you want to, Tara?
I don't mind doing it, it's just that I think my schedule is probably going to be one minute at the end of the day.
Okay. Okay, let's go through. We did the service filter, we approved more music, dates, program studies. We talked about locker room. All right, so we need a motion for the approval of the AP warrants that were submitted in January twenty nineteen.
Motion to approve the AP warrant submitted in January twenty nineteen.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Will abstain? Approval of the January fourteenth, twenty nineteen minutes. Any comments or revisions to that? Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the January fourteenth, twenty nineteen minutes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the warrants submitted in January twenty nineteen. Is there a motion?
Want to approve the warrants submitted in January twenty nineteen?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and we did the calendar, we did the school choice slots, and we are approving school choice. We did the SOI vote, that was fun to read. And we talked about formative evaluation rating. We did not vote on that. Do we need? All right.
As long as you're not going to fire me, it's really, it's fine.
I didn't intend to fire you. Okay. The next regular meeting before we go into executive session, March twenty-fifth, I am not going to be here. I was going to originally say, please convene without me, but I really do want to be here for the forum. The school start time. I don't know whether the prior week, the eighteenth, it sounded like maybe Tuesday night, because Monday was.
What does the following, the couple of days look like for you?
After the twenty-fifth?
Like the twenty-sixth, the twenty-seventh?
I'm gone that whole week.
Okay.
Yeah.
Another possibility to pick one of those?
Putting it off there? That is candidate's night here from the mothers club. I mean, we could meet, but I would hate to have a forum the same night that they're doing.
Should we invite the other people?
If we start. What time does the forum?
Seven P.M.
At seven P.M., so we would meet in a different room, but to that point, potentially, I mean, just for you guys for candidate's night. What I have on the agenda for March will be an update on the budget. There won't be a final budget to vote. The busing forum, policy, and whether or not we have a locker room or a warum on the call. We've gotten the information on the locker room. That's it. You can't, okay. So you want to go back to that previous week then? Do you want to look at April second, the previous week?
We can also patch in the morning, if you allow. Paul's going to be patching in anyways.
Could, but then the three other folks have to be here, right? But remote folks don't count unless there's a floor.
The week, the week of the first, is there another date? With the second?
Yes, the second works.
How does that look for you guys? Right now, the second is open for.
You can do the second.
As of, yes, I believe that works.
Yes, I can do it.
Okay, so we will hold our March meeting really in April, on the second. And let me just ask, our regular April meeting is supposed to be, is it the twenty-second? Just to make sure. It's not during April break. One, two, three.
So then, one, two, three, the twenty-second.
Okay. And is that enough time in between for like first read and the final reads, things like that?
I think so.
Okay, so April second, we'll do that? And then our April meeting will also be the twenty-second.
The twenty-second, I'm just.
The twenty-second is our regular April meeting.
So what will be important in April? And it's okay if we end up changing the twenty-second, but right now it looks like, who can make it on the twenty-second?
I can.
Other can?
I can.
Tara can?
Oh, actually, I can't, I'm sorry.
So let's try to pick a year now, you know why? Because that's when you do a public hearing on the budget. And if that doesn't get in the paper and voted, we can't vote it on town meetings for.
Any chance that the thirtieth might work through?
April thirtieth, Tuesday? Currently, that looks fine.
Me too.
Okay. So in lieu of the twenty-second, we're looking at April thirtieth, which would also then be, that would be the public hearing of the budget.
Great. So April second, please our rescheduled March date, five-thirty, we'll do the forum then and other topics. And then April thirtieth will be our April meeting.
Yeah.
Open, sorry, budget open hearing.
Can you do that? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Does that work for you?
I'll fill you in the week before.
All right, just done. And you know me, I'll just say, I don't, don't worry about it. You can, you know, make those to follow.
Yeah, I'll take that, too. I mean, if you talk to him, we email too, but I'll make sure.
I know May is a ways out, but the fourth Monday is Memorial Day. So does it make sense to try to land a flag on the twentieth?
So that is unfortunately hard for me to say right now because I have on here a hold for grant conference. I don't know if that's a mandatory grant conference or not.
Sure. Or the twenty-ninth or twenty-eighth?
Twenty-eighths or twenty-nines would be better for me.
Maybe the twenty-eighth.
Because I know I won't have any work traveling.
So when you choose days in a row, you could do the Tuesday.
The twenty-eighth?
The twenty-eighth works for me.
Yeah, works for me.
Is it, can you put a deadline up hold in there? Is it too much or do things happen too much for you? Is it possible for us to make that May decision at that March meeting that is not April? Is that okay? I just, I have unfortunately all these holds for possible grant conference, possible meeting.
Can we pick a date that doesn't have a hold for you? Just even if it's tentative, otherwise our schedules.
Get filled up so quickly? All right, so then I would ask you.
Twenty-first, twenty-ninth.
Yeah, is the twenty-ninth, is the twenty-ninth a possibility for people?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so can we say that as a?
Okay.
I will miss the CES board meeting, but that's, you know, that this takes precedence, I think.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up.
So that's the twenty-ninth, I said.
Yep.
All right. Turn and go into executive session.
Okay, and I know the statement that needs to be read is.
And you know what? You as the chair can read, I will entertain a motion too, and then somebody all has to do is say, so.
Got it. I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session, discuss strategy with respective contract negotiations, with non-union personnel to discuss the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, as I have determined that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, and not to return to open session.
I'll make that motion so that you can entertain it.
I am entertained.
I will sign it.
All right. And a roll on vote. Keith? Keith, are you entertained?
I'm quite entertained and yes, yes.
Okay. Tara?
Yes.
Mara? I have, yes, great. We go into the next session. Okay.